Mr. Bryant. Mr. Faulkner.
Here.
Mr. Atwood.
Here.
Ms. Ballard.
Here.
Mrs. Orza.
Present. A pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Each year, we want to give our building neighbors the opportunity to share efforts that are taking place in our building and let us to make out. Mr. Joe Miller, Principal of our Woodhills School. Hello, Mr. Miller.
Mr. President and members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all in one place, and I'm happy to say hello to many of you, and also to say hello, nice to meet you for the first time for some of you in Sporso. So, I have written down quite a few things here, and just to keep me on task, because I don't want to go pinging all over the place, I just recently found out that our tech department apparently has a nickname for me, they call me squirrel, apparently, which I didn't know. So, I was like, okay, am I really that far off all over the place? So, I have this here to keep me on task and on point. The first thing I have to say from my heart, honestly, representing the middle school, is I want to thank the board, our superintendent, and the good citizens of Norwood for having the foresight and just the good sense to take care of our buildings. And what do I mean by that? And I mean truly as the construction. It has to be said, we started at the middle school, and I want to thank you for that. We have rooms that are well-lit, painted, there's plenty of technology in the rooms, air conditioning, heating. We have a safe, warm environment for our kids, and it's beautiful. It's a process that's continuing and it's ongoing, and there's sure there's been some changes and things of that nature. But the staff, the students, and the parents, and the community are moving with it, and we're just delighted and happy to have the rooms that we did. And they're wonderful. And I thank you on behalf of the students, the staff, and the parents. So, I'll move on to the bigger, the more important thing, is what happens in those buildings? What happens in those buildings? So, I recently sent an email out to our staff, and it was titled Initiatives and Support. So, this was something that I sent to our staff very recently, so I thought, what am I going to talk to about to the board? So, I was like, well, I'll just use that, I'll just, I'll take that, and I think I may have sent something, a paraphrased version of that in a status report. So, in no particular order necessarily, I'll go through the many of those items. So, one of those pieces was attendance and punctuality. Attendance and punctuality is one of the things that we're working with students, is getting them into the building, getting them into the building on time. So, we have had several be on time breakfasts at the middle school, working with Roger Kip and our cafeteria folks, we provided breakfasts essentially on the lawn to students. And on the days that we've done that, we've practically tripled the amount of breakfast that we've served the students, which is a good thing. We can't do it every day, but we've had really good feedback on that and turnout for kids. I mean, we've had be on time breakfasts, we celebrated a perfect attendance picnic for students that received perfect attendance for the first quarter. We had almost 90 kids that had perfect attendance, which is huge. And we wanted to reward and recognize those students. So, we provided a lunch for them, for those students on the lawn where it was cooked, Mr. Stacy helped do that, as well as a number of our staff. We really make efforts to recognize kids who are doing the things they should be doing, and by and large, our kids do. We have recently started a morning game room club. Again, this is to target kids that aren't quite gifted, and we're trying to use this as a way to get kids in early, making sure they get on time. So, we did purchase and have had plenty of donations as well to have a game club, a game room where we had some space. And you might say, why? But it is middle school, we would like to have fun. So, we do provide tickets to teachers to give to kids who do the right thing, and they can take advantage of that at lunchtime, where they go into the game room, there's pop a shot, there's foosball, there's air hockey, and most of those actually have been donated. So, we really just pulled together resources that we already had to use to incentivize and reward kids for doing all the good things that they do. We just recently added the morning club piece, that was an initiative that Amy Colby, our counselor, has started, and I was like, all means do it, working with Deb Robinson, the student services director, to really target some of the kids that are having difficulty getting in on time. We're also doing a first bell attendance competition with our first bells, the ones that have the most, the highest percentage of kids on time, they will get some time to spend in that game room. And there's many other things that we're doing as well. School culture and climate was another area of focus for me with our staff. We recently had a rise and shine breakfast for new students to the district. When I say new students, I don't mean students that have moved away and come back, I mean students that have come to us from Las Vegas, from South America, from all over the United States, and there were 14-plus kids. To really welcome them and see how they're doing, and also ask them questions about what are some good things that you're seeing here, what are some things that you have feedback on for us, that we can learn from maybe some of the schools that you've attended. And again, that was an initiative from Ms. Colby and Mr. Stacy. So, I don't do any of these things in a vacuum. We have a great team with Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Stacy, and Ms. Colby in the front office. We sort of feed off of each other in terms of how we address things that come up at the middle school. So, when I say these things, I speak for all of them, and it's not just me. So, again, the rise and shine, I had the Warrior Bucks. Someone asked if they could see some of these, if we could pass those around. We did this last year, we had a student store where we would, students would get these Warrior Bucks, where they could go to the store and get items that were donated, shirts, t-shirts, pride shirts for Norwood's schools. I mean, we were grabbing things from everybody, but they were things that kids wanted. And it went well, it went very well. This year with construction, space was a bit limited, so we've gone mobile. We are using the carts at this time in the front, we just kind of decided, all right, we can't wait, we're going to do this, because kids enjoy it. And so, we are using the, essentially the front where you walk in is the space to have our student store essentially. And when we get the elevator operational, we're essentially going to walk around the classrooms, and so that'll come around very soon. Kids always like, they've been asking, when are we going to do the store, when are we going to do the store? So, we finally decided last week and the week before, we can't wait, we just got to figure another way around it. And this year has been like that, we just, we got to make it work, and we have made it work. So, the Warrior Bucks is a fun thing that we're doing, again, to reward students for doing all the good things that we know they did. And we put the power in the hands of the teachers, they don't need to just hear it from us, we want teachers to be able to give those out. And in fact, today in our staff meeting, I'm like, give them out liberally, just give them out. We'll figure out how we're going to get more stuff to stock the store. Let that be our problem, that's a good problem. School culture and climate, and I just, I got to say it, hoodies and flip-flops, I want to say it. I appreciate your support on our student handbook, and maybe you knew or didn't know or unknowingly you approved that for us. It's been, it's been a nice change. The flip-flops for me truly were a safety concern. I mean, I've had kids that were running up and down steps, we have a fire drill, they might trip, they might break a leg. That really was a true safety concern. The hoodies as well, sometimes kids come in and we don't know who they are as well, that could be an issue. But I appreciate your support, and by and large, we've made our way through the period of kids like, why, why can't, you know, why this, why not? And we've moved on. You know, sometimes kids are, yeah, I don't have something else. Well, I've gone and purchased, purchased some very nice vests that are, that don't have a hoodie, for kids that may not have it. And so, we don't want to make that a barrier or a problem. And they're nice, and you know, I'm like, here, this is yours, take it. And the nice side to that is that it really has helped clean up things, you know? Kids are, it just, it looks nice. And I just want to thank you with that, that some of those issues may or may not have trickled up to you or not, and I don't want to say it's an issue, it's just, it's been a nice change in the middle school in terms of the culture and climate, and how we look, and I appreciate it. One of the other things I want to mention is one-to-one devices. This is something you may have read in the status report. I was approached about maybe being somebody to start it in terms of the middle school, so I was excited about that, and I wanted to be the one to tell you that we are certainly working with the staff, or will be working with the staff, Ms. Cheston and Randall Grandstaff, and our, all of our great tech people, to roll that out. And we're looking at, as we move into second semester, so sometime after Christmas. You know, I'm always wanting to be able to, let's do it, let's jump on, and Chris is like, hey, you got to go slow to go fast sometimes, and she's right most of the time, probably all the time. So, we are taking that time now to really, to plan out and figure out how that's going to work. And my direction to the staff, you know, is, yeah, there's going to be, you're going to think of things that we want, and the end result is how can we make this work? And not what are the problems, but yeah, sure, what are the challenges, and what can we do to address that? So, I'm going to move quickly, because I feel that I'm probably going over the time I was probably avoided already, so I'll try to get through the other sections. Student recognition and engagement was another area that I asked our staff to focus on, and we have. So, we had, like I said before, we had almost 90 kids with perfect attendance. We had nearly half, I mean, and this is honest, nearly half of our students that were on honor roll, either A, B honor roll, A, O honor roll, or B honor roll. And that's remarkable. So, we were thrilled to have all those kids on stage, and I'm learning at Twitter, believe it or not, you might think that I'm a technology savvy type person, but I'm not. So, I put those pictures out recently with Twitter of our honor roll folks, and we're very proud of them. Student council, one of the things that came out of our breakfast bash, rise and shine with our new students to Norwood was, you know, that level of involvement, and we said, you know what, you're right, we really do need to get that back and rolling. And so, I've got a staff member that's committed to working with students and doing projects and getting them involved at a level that we want to see, and really encourage kids to take leadership roles. So, and that starts with our staff, so we have somebody that's going to lead that for us. I can't get out without recognizing our eighth grade football team, they did quite well, winning the conference as far as I know, but I also want to congratulate in just all of our sports teams, our soccer teams, the girls did quite well, they moved through tournament play. The boys didn't get quite as far as they wanted to get, but nonetheless, they did, they did well. It's quite a feat to go out and do sports and be involved like that after school. You got homework, and I want to commend all the athletes, and that includes volleyball, and a band, and as well as the cheerleaders that are at all these sporting events. Cheerleading, wow, I'm just going to say that that's quite a commitment. So, I want to thank all of them for that commitment. So, student recognition and engagement, you may or may not have seen our Norwood Pride t-shirts, we give those out to all the kids. One of the things I recognize as we move through the beginning of the year is like, you know, we want to instill pride in these students, that they go to the Norwood City Schools. And we gave them these shirts, and they wear them, they wear them, and it's awesome. So, I'm very happy that we, I was happy to use our funds for that, the principal funds to purchase shirts. They weren't cheap, but you know what, the kids wear them, and they're proud to wear them, and so, you may have seen those pictures, that might even be one of the buildings, I think. So, and lastly, academic achievement, which that's a big reason why we're here, it certainly is. I won't sugarcoat it, the scores were not what we want them to be, they were not at the levels that we want them to be, there is no doubt about that, but we are working very hard to address the concerns that we have. Some of the things, some of the highlights that we say in terms of gap closing for us, we met gap closing for our Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students, we nearly met that for our African-American students, where goals were 63.4 for language arts and we were at 61.1. And when I looked through that information, we were close, we were close in making gains in terms of gap. The gap doesn't mean we met the indicator, it means that we meet growth for those students, those particular subsets, and we were close. So, there is hope and there's promise that we will get there, and we're working very hard and diligently to get there. The same gap closing for math, Hispanic economically disadvantaged, we met those marks. And again, with our African-American students, we were, we were close. Didn't get there, but we were close. Gifted, we don't always talk about gifted, that is one of the areas that I certainly have been looking at. We do well with gifted students, and I will speak to that in terms of how we did on our performance index for gifted. Look at the report, we met it, we met it for our gifted kids. If we didn't meet the indicator, we met the performance piece of that. That means we took kids that are identified as gifted, and we moved them in a direction and as far as the state says, well, you should have got them this far, we got them that far. Now, we didn't meet the indicator because we didn't identify and serve enough kids in all the areas, which is the area that I would like to continue to look at, that's social studies, science, visual arts, visual performing arts. And so, anyways, that's gifted. The areas that we didn't meet are language arts and math. We did not waste any time with the help of Ms. Cheston, we looked at a program called Apex that replaced edgenuity for original credit at the high school. Apex brought to the table tutorials, which we were using in the middle school in language arts and math. Tutorials, when students go in to take an initial test in that area, it will identify gaps in their learning. And we recognized based off the results that our kids have gaps, and I stress to the teachers, it's not that our kids can't learn, because they can, they do have gaps. So, we're using Apex as a way to address that concern, and it is online, however, every student is in a classroom with a teacher. And I want to have buy-in for all of our teachers, it's not just the language arts teachers, it's not just the math teachers. Every teacher has a class of students, and we're using what was previously advisory time to use Apex to help students. There was some griping and roaming, you know, initially, the fact that we have to do this, but I've made some efforts to go into each of those classes and to indicate to kids, hey, this matters, we want you to try, we're trying to help you, and, you know, and we'll see, we'll see. The other piece, and I'm getting to the end, is that we're using math testing for benchmarking to know if we're making a difference, we're not waiting until we get test results in June. So, thanks again to Ms. Cheston, making the wise choice to bring back some benchmarking for us. Math testing, kids took the reading and math pieces, which we'll take again in perhaps midterm, and then again sometime before testing. So, that gives us an opportunity to see where kids are at, and if we need to correct course midterm. So, I'm very hopeful that we will make a difference in terms of achievement. And I say I'm not just hopeful, I'm saying hopeful in the sense that we're trying to do something about it, and we have the tools to do that, and, you know, so anyways, that is Norwood Middle School. I know that was probably longer than I was supposed to speak, but if you have questions, I'm.
Where will the new store be once all the construction's finished?
Well, at the moment, we kind of like this mobile idea, actually, we've sort of adapted. So, when the elevator gets cleared, at this time, I understand that the elevator is technically functional, but they have to get some things ready for inspection, but once that's done, we should be able to actually go, the idea was to go classroom in classroom, which we thought would be kind of cool.
Okay.
So, a couple weeks ago, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with one of your teachers, who happens to be a recipient of one of the rooms that was just recently remodeled and done. And that teacher was thanking us for taking the step and spending the money to redo those rooms. And what that teacher had told me is, the side effect from doing this remodel is that that teacher is weeks ahead in his curriculum than he has been in years past, and we're just, just through the first quarter, right? He's already weeks ahead in his curriculum, and the students are no longer as tired at the end of the day. So, in years past, when you get to those students at the end of the day in those rooms, and they're just exhausted, they're tired, your attention span isn't there, and now that isn't happening. So, I'm really looking forward to once all the rooms are done, and as we expand this project into the other grade levels. I mean, that's just one teacher's experience, I mean, I just can't wait to see what it does with the rest of the district. And I wanted to share that with you, that's, thank you, that's good to hear.
I really like that you're doing reward programs, the best I got for being on time to school was, I didn't get detention. So, it's really cool that you're doing these rewarding system programs for the kids and really trying to engage them.
Yes.
Not only on just not doing their work, but just showing up and how that can impact your whole day, just by showing up, and that's really awesome, so I commend you for this.
Thank you, thank you. It's easy to get caught up in the other side of that equation where you're dealing with kids that might not, but by and large, kids are doing what they need to be doing, and that is where we want to maintain a large part of our focus, is rewarding them, so thank you.
Mr. Miller, you talked a little bit about Chromebooks, and I think we all think one-to-one means that all of our students have access to a device. Can you talk to us a little bit back more about what one-to-one is going to mean after winter break?
Sure, and I mean, I don't, stop me, I don't want to overstep.
No, that's next on our list of discussion items, I thought we'd go ahead and...
So, one-to-one would be literally one-to-one to each student, and that they would be able to have the opportunity to take those home with them. And, you know, I'll share that if you ask around, probably many districts do do that already. And I'm not trying to say that we're behind the times or anything like that, in no way, shape, or form. It just, it's a perfect storm in terms of a good opportunity for us to see how that goes, and I really see that as another level of trust for our students, like, we believe you can do, you can do this. You know, there are, sure, there's concerns that they're going to get broke, and that, of course, that's going to happen, but to be able to have the opportunity to have that at home and finish homework, and things of that nature, they deserve it. And it is a good opportunity to see how we can make it work, work out the kinks. The middle school gets to do that, a lot of that this year, and I'm all right with it. You know, pulling the rest of the folks along with that sometimes is a challenge, but they've done it, they've responded, you know? And I speak of construction, and like, you know, we learn, we're learning, we're learning, isn't that what we're supposed to do as educators? Is learn. And, you know...
Which is painful sometimes.
It is, it is, change is hard, but I'm excited, I'm excited about the one-to-one.
So, they'll get their own little briefcase of sorts to carry their Chromebook?
Much like those, right?
Actually, yeah. And these have actually, these cases were purchased some time ago.
They were.
It's just been challenging to decide to let kids have their very own. So, they each, in every classroom they go into, they have access to their very own Chromebook, but this would say, Mrs. Orza, this one is yours, and you get that case, and it will become yours, and you'll take it home and bring it back every day. So, we're excited for that, we're excited for them to have that level of...
Responsibility.
Absolutely.
Those are set to go out right after break?
We were looking at the second semester, so I think it's a week or two in to the, after we get back from the break.
Ms. Cheston, should we talk a little bit about the life of the Chromebooks that we have now?
Well, I think the board remembers that they are coming to the end of life, and that life has been extended. We've gotten our money's worth out of these devices, for sure. They were originally given a certain span of time, and that's been stretched. I think there's been a lot of school districts that use these devices, and they've asked for the stretch, and it's been met, we're very grateful. So, they are coming to the end of life at the end of this year, and we knew that day was coming. It is the perfect time to have a go with this, because if things don't go as we expect them to go really well, if something goes a little bit awry, we can handle it, because we also know that the end of life is coming too. So, the loss and the risk is at its lowest point ever in the history of the device, it's not a brand-new device. Even with a brand-new device, though, remember, we chose wisely, and we will continue to choose wisely, a price point that we can handle, so in case there is damage or there is loss of some sort, we can, we can handle that. But we can particularly handle it at this time in the duration, knowing that they are coming to the end. We have security that we're working on behind the scenes to make sure that our firewalls are maintained, and all the ways we protect our youth are continued in their home environment. They will hop onto someone else's internet, but all of our firewalls will continue to work as they would as if they were in school, and we're fine-tuning that just to ensure that everything works properly. We have the ability to turn a device into a brick if it falls under the wrong hands, so we'll implement that as well. If we know that something has been stolen, we will take that initiative as well. So, we have, there's, there's a lot of things that go into that, it's not just have a go with it, but we have to make sure that we keep our kids safe with our devices. We believe that it will help our families at home, because they might have a device at home, but they might also have three kids that need to hop on, so we think that will alleviate a little bit of that tension that arises in a home, so we're happy about that. And we know that we have safe Wi-Fi places for them to access if they stay with us after school, we know there's some community places, certainly the library, so we think that we're, we're helping that cause as well. So, we'll continue to learn as they do take them home and bring them back, and give us feedback about how that experience is. We believe that homework will be done, it'll be a little more interesting, there's something appealing about your own device, so we think all those things will come into play with our middle schoolers.
Do we have a plan in place for damaging the computer? Because my boyfriend runs the IT at Harrison, and he deals with this a lot, where students will break into firewalls and will damage their computer, and of course, I didn't do it, comes up quite a bit, but they have, they have a series of, you know, fines in place for parents, things like that, do we have something similar in place?
We're working through those logistics. We don't, we don't want this to be a burdensome thing for our families, so we want to, but we know there's some realities and some responsibility parts, but...
Having a case is an excellent thing, though.
Yeah, I mean, we have a strong but mighty, a small but mighty IT team, and so, we continue, you know, kids are smart too, and they'll find ways, and we continue to help find that way with them, and try not to miss a beat, so we have a number of things to keep it safe. But as we all know, security, using a device, it's an ongoing process, and will continue to be. So, we're very fortunate in our department, how responsive and how in tune they are with that part, but you can never, you know, it changes all the time, so...
I do recommend on your days where you're issuing these to students, if you have like assembly line style in the cafeteria, however you're doing this to get them out to your students, bring in some people to help your IT guys, because I know for them, they had five, and they had about 4,000 computers to get out, and it took them three days to get all of those computers issued and logged in and signed up, and it was a lot of effort, so bring in some folks for that event.
We're going to issue them through our library at the middle school, and we're going to be recruiting our other librarians so they can join forces together.
Good plan.
And that we all have, they have a device that can monitor the access code, and then we'll have a place for, you get your device and a place for you put on your own case, and it becomes yours, and then a place for training and some things with the teachers. So, yeah, the point well taken, we thought of that as well. Yeah, not one person, just a minute, it's going to be a little faster than that. So, yeah, we're working through all those behind-the-scenes things right now.
So, the intention long-term is middle school is where we start this kind of responsibility, and as they move through the grades, perhaps, is there a timeline for when, when will you deem this successful? Is there a timeline for when, when will you deem this successful or failure? And then based on that, how soon after the high school?
Probably after, after the school.
That second, that second semester, we'll know. Yeah. Now at our elementaries, it's different. They might have a one-to-one experience during the day. They sometimes travel with them unless they have steps. Sometimes we keep them in one spot. So, because that's a little hard to manage. So we work that out at elementaries. It's a different scene. So right now, our focus is middle school and then onward and upward.
It's such an amazing thing, breaking down some barriers like that. It's really exciting.
We know we have to talk to our parents too about the parameters they want to set forth in their own home. They might have some new rules. You know, you can only use this device out here. Even though we have our tight security, they might want to be a part of that action. So they need to be on board. And we will ask parents to sign off that they welcome this device to their home.
So you had mentioned that we'll have the ability to turn the device into a brick. So is the same option available if we wanted to kind of do like a find my iPhone? Because I do imagine there's going to be some level of theft with these devices.
I don't know that we can find my Chromebook. I'll have to find out about that. I don't think we're.
I can look into that because Chromebooks are what they use out in Harrison. I can find out. Because he's even said they've already had students who have switched the district like mid-quarter, things like that. Computers weren't returned the way they were supposed to. And they have had to send out folks whose students just stopped showing up for school to go pick up those devices. Some of them, they were able to recover, but they said others, they're gone. So if they up and move without any notice to the district, then we've lost that cost and theirs are brand-new. So this year, this is a first year for them, for the whole entire district, including elementary, to go home with their devices. So I know that that's quite the cost.
I would like to see us put some level of at least comfort there that we could have the ability to potentially recover this. If not, if it's truly a theft thing, then we can give that information to the proper authorities. They can take it from there. But I would just.
Sure. Now, they did find a few that got stolen and all of the serial numbers were tracked. And they found a box full of devices that somebody had taken from the shipment they got originally. Someone came onto school property and had taken a box. And all of them had been documented and they were lucky enough to recover those devices through police help. But the, making sure we have a very good database that is with all of the serial numbers and everything assigned to the students will be helpful for recovery and giving a copy of those to our local law enforcement will help immediately for if we're like, hey, this student just bounced out of the district. We need help finding this device.
All of our computer equipment is detailed like that.
Then I think we'll be okay in terms of tracking them down.
Athletics. Basketball's going to be sent for because it's smaller, a smaller group. So I'm sure you have enough lockers for all the basketball players. Do you have enough lockers for all the football players?
In where, in the.
In the building because at least in my mind, I'm trying to sit here and then look at the logistics. School day ends, pack up my computer, go to football practice, change clothes, go to the football field. Well, I'm not going to carry my laptop with me to the football field. So I'm going to have to leave it in the locker room and I need to put it in a place that's secure.
We, and I can report that our lockers are on board now. There's plenty of lockers. And the new lockers are very spacious. I mean, there's plenty of room to actually put equipment in there. When I say I like football.
I just want to make sure we don't hang them out to dry where they've got no security for them.
There's, there's plenty of space there.
I think, I mean, those are opportunities to exercise responsibility. And we'll have to guide our students through that.
And our staff because there's a lot of times where we'll go to the football field and leave the football locker room unlocked because there's a student that's supposed to get in there and do something. Well, now that's not an option.
Yeah, we'll have to be thoughtful about that.
And I just pick up the ball because it's one of the bigger sports.
And things seem to go missing in this, in years. Can we move on to graduation? Great. So graduation requirements have been a conversation, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Among public school employees at all levels, actually. Presently, the State Board of Education is discussing the opportunity to make some changes or adjustments. Mrs. Cheston wants to speak to the challenges and the proposed changes that could impact graduation. If you recall, Mr. Winrad briefly addressed the challenges of students not meeting those requirements when he spoke to us a few weeks ago.
And I know Mr. Atwood has spoken to State Board of Education member Pat Bruns. And she also presented at a meeting I was at recently. So I want to tell you, remind, I want to remind everyone of what is in place currently for this year. So this is not, it's not on this sheet yet. This is what's to come potentially. So for this year's graduating class of 2019, we have about 32 to 33 students that we are concerned about that will be taking the end-of-course exam retake in December. That's when they take it. And then when those results come back, we will have a clearer picture because that is their last attempt, which was surprising to Pat when we mentioned that out loud at the meeting. That is their final attempt because the next time they can try, the results won't come until after graduation. So they could graduate over the summer, sure, but it's not quite the same thing. We all know that.
I mentioned that to her in the meeting when I had to.
She sounds surprised then as well?
Yeah, she seems surprised.
So we did mention that again to her because we, she is a voice for us and she's a real great advocate for this work and is certainly committed to it, but I think it's important to keep telling the truth about this, like what the real ramifications are. So this is for, right now for the class of 2019, there are, it is not like the class of 2018. They had alternatives and those are no longer in place for this class. They did not extend them when they had the opportunity to do so, and that's unfortunate. So we are waiting for the results of tonight's election to see how we move forward. And I sat in that meeting and I thought, my goodness gracious, most people plan a wedding a year ahead of time and that's for one day. And this is the current class of seniors that will be walking across Xavier, the stage in May. And we haven't told them yet other opportunities. And that's disappointing. That's a lot of stress. They know the three choices and the three choices have always been in place before the class of 2018 received a little bit of an other option. So that is taking the Ohio State test and getting those 18 points. That's the traditional pathway. There is the industry credentialing and the WOOCHEES program. So that's getting those 12 points. And it's usually a scarlet oak kid. Well, it's always a scarlet oak kid or a diamond oaks or one of the oaks. It is a certain pathway they choose and they take a WOOCHEES exam, which is hard and challenging for their certain area. And then the third option is a career college readiness score on the ACT or the SAT that's remediation-free. Well, in your mind, you can kind of guess. If I'm getting, if I'm not getting my 18 points, I'm probably not getting the ACT score. Or if I am getting my ACT, or the 18 points, I'm probably closer to getting my ACT or SAT score. So those are the three choices that are in place currently for this class. And that's why Mr. Winrad spoke about those students that he's concerned about. So for this year, if everything stays the same, so just say they decided to make no changes. They could not convince our legislators to make a change. The State Board of Education has an option to do what they call a nuclear plan. And the nuclear plan is where they would shift the 18 points to 14 points with one swoop. And the, we confidently said, oh, you'll only be doing that one time and then they'll change that law real quick. But that's their, the State Board of Education says that's what we'll do if they make no changes. We will shift from 18 to 14 points to at least be more welcoming to some of these students that aren't at 18. And that's, that's nice. It might not be enough for some kids, quite frankly. So, but it will be their last-ditch effort to make a difference in the students' lives for this year's graduating class. If the state legislator, legislation comes in and says, okay, we'll go with the requirements of 2018 and we'll let that ride for 2019 and even 2020, they're kind of hoping for at least a two-year extension. That's, that would be great. But then we have to tell the kids about it and they have to do the work because there's work involved with some of those other opportunities. And we will do our due diligence as soon as that comes into play. Pat mentioned that they want the deadline to be December 1st for when the legislators would come back and say, yes, we agree, we'll extend it. I don't know. It's all, it is political. So depending on the shift of our governors in the parties, all of that may or may not happen. So we will have to wait and see after this evening.
So I have a question for you. So if we lower the number of points down to 14, are we actually doing a benefit to our kids by lowering the standards of which they can graduate? Or what, what is less required of them? For me, it was if you didn't meet the requirements, then you were held back a year and because you didn't meet those requirements. And I understand that some of these students may struggle. They may have different issues that may prevent them from reaching 18 points. For that, I'm definitely sympathetic. But for the average student, I mean, I had to meet all those requirements when I went to school. And if it was, if you didn't meet those requirements, then you did not graduate. So I don't want to put out kids who are not ready to graduate if they are, if they're not able to meet those standards. So what would lowering that point value look like in terms of their testing ability? It means that if they had to have a B, now they have to have a C? If they, like, what would be an equivalent?
It's all points on their end-of-course exam. So maybe I should have said that more clearly.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. What is missing from this whole point?
So their course requirements remain the same. So they have to do our course requirements that we have, the electives, the years of experience for English, math, science, and social studies.
Which are likely her only, our experience. That was likely ours.
We didn't have a proficiency test. That was it. They still have to do that. We don't change that. The 18 points comes from only the end-of-course exam. So when you're in high school, you take seven tests. You take English Language Arts 1 and 2, so ninth grade and 10th grade. You take Algebra 1 and Geometry for us, so ninth and 10th, or even eighth grade and ninth grade. Those are your math classes, generally speaking. And then you take a Biology test and you take an American Government test and American History test. Those are the state tests that all of our kids participate in, starting in April now. And they've shifted the weeks a little bit. But they do for the first time at the, it's the end of that course, so not May, but April, the month before. And then those results start building. And the most points you can get on an assessment is five. And obviously, we've had some ones and things like that as well. So these are students who, and you have to get certain amount of points with each of your subject areas too. In English Language Arts and in math, you have to get a certain number and then everything else comes into play. So out of all seven of those tests, you have to get 18 points. So what the State Board of Education is saying is, okay, as a last chance, because we can't, because we can't find a new pathway for you, we don't have the power to do that, we will reduce the number of points for kids so that more kids will graduate. That's their goal. They want more kids to graduate because they know the truth is not letting kids graduate stops them, stops them in their life. It changes their life. It really does. It's a life-changing event to not graduate with your class on time. Some kids will come back and make up that difference. Many will surrender. And many will come back three years later to try to find their way again. So they're all in different pathways. So if these are only three choices, then there's, the State Board of Education is saying, well, we have the power to reduce one of them and we'll take it. Their hope really is that we go back to last year. And last year said, yes, have these choices, but we're also going to give you some other ways. We're going to let grade point average and attendance count for you kids that can't quite handle the pressure of a state to assessment, but demonstrate your knowledge in the classroom and have really good attendance. We're going to let you do a capstone project and we're going to let that be one of your ways that you show us that you know and have acquired things. So there were other path, there were other options last year and that's why more of our students were able to take advantage of those.
And that's what we're holding out for.
We're holding out, but they will let us at least do what last year allowed for in this year and at least the next year. So at least two more years grace period. What we really want and what this kind of highlights is, we want when you come in as a freshman to know what, how, what you're expected to know in four years and accomplish. This is their senior year and they're in this willy-nilly spot and that's hard and it's stressful. So if I'm a student who's sitting at 13 points, I'm like, oh, this is a bit daunting for me. I come every day. I'm not so hot at this school gig, but I'll be here. Isn't there another way I could show you what I know? And that happens to some kids. Some kids aren't able to show what they know on state tests and some are quite frankly awesome at it.
But they're there every day and they pass their course.
They do. So that's, this year is, we have an urgent need this year for sure. And this document, and I don't want to go over all of it, but this is what's to come. And it is an interesting read and we will talk about this next, perhaps in future meetings in more detail. But what the State Board of Education, and I believe once the appendix starts on page six, this is their seventh draft of this appendix. And what their hope is with this new proposal is that it's kind of, it's, they call it simple and complex. And I would agree with that. They want you to demonstrate knowledge in English and they show you on page seven, all the different ways you can demonstrate knowledge in English. And they, they talk about end-of-course exams. They talk about college credit plus courses. They talk about your grade point average being at average of 2.5 or better. And then they even talk about AP and ACT, et cetera, online English, and then a writing demonstration. So that's their new approach is these multiple ways for students to demonstrate knowledge. And that kind of follows through with math, with their new emphasis on technology and their new emphasis on a well-rounded education and even leadership. So they're kind of exploring different ways that students can show what they know, not just the state test. So when I was with Pat, I said, this is an interesting approach, but this will be very difficult for schools and districts to handle because we still are required by law to give the end-of-course exams. And now I'm a senior and I'm not so great at those end-of-course exams and I don't really like them anyway, but my grade point average is great. It's 3.5 or so, or 3.3, or it's a 3.0. I'm good to go on English and now you're going to place an end-of-course exam in front of me that doesn't count for me any longer. I'll do it, but it doesn't carry the weight and I might not perform my best because I'm a teenager and that just might be that particular day. So the school carries the burden of that score as does the district. So to that end, Pat said, well, we're working on that part too. We're working on the accountability being different too, which is a whole nother beast to carry. So of course, our top priority as a school district is we want students to graduate. But then there's a second tier. We'd like to look decent in this approach as well. So there's a reality of this. So there's a lot left to do with the seventh draft in place. There's just a lot of part two and three and four and five and six.
This isn't until 2021.
That's right. And so they, and here they say, in a preferred world, so to speak, we would like everyone, we'd like their, when you come in as a ninth grader, you would know what you're going to be doing. Well, if we've only taken care of 19 and 20, we got to take care of two more years or, or they got to extend it four years. And we'd share that with Pat and she's like, what are you all talking about? And we're like, okay. So we regrouped a bit and she's like, oh, now I understand. We need two more years.
I had the same conversation with her.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the transition to what they want to get in the future, but we have this gap that we have to close now. And I just want to stress how scary this is. So right now, I mean, we're, all of these seniors are in a really bad spot. Okay? Especially the ones that are on that, on that fence edge of either making or not making it. So.
And their families.
Right, and their families. So the alternate pathways for 2018 are not in play as of right now for this year or next year. Okay? So that leaves with the three traditional options, right? The State Board of Education is going to take to the House Education Committee the proposal to extend the next two years to the 2018 alternate pathways. But they can't do that until the legislature reconvenes after this election today. Right? So it's going to be the next week or two and it's a lame duck session. Now, how many, how many policies do you guys know of that actually make it through during a lame duck session in Ohio? It's this many, this many.
Why did they let this fall drop for like mid-school year? Only because it's an election cycle?
No, 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 no.
I mean, why did they just say?
Somebody fell asleep at the wheel, literally. Somebody fell asleep at the wheel.
It lapsed.
And it lapsed.
They did propose this in May before they went on recess and it wasn't accepted at that time.
It wasn't accepted. And now, now you're going to accept it now? So I told Pat, I said, so, so this isn't going to go anywhere in a lame duck. So I told Pat, I said, so, so this isn't going to go anywhere in a lame duck session. If it does, I'll, you know, whatever. I mean, that'll be fantastic. But it isn't going to happen. So that means that they'll reintroduce it again when the new legislature takes office in January. Right? But then it's got to go through a new committee hearing session, and then the House Speaker has to say, yes, this is good enough to be brought to the floor.
Before our kids graduate in May?
Before our kids graduate in May. So, so this thing probably won't even get voted on realistically until February at the earliest. Right? And, and which point, the State Board of Education may have already made up their mind to use the nuclear option because, you know, we have to know what we're doing, so could we have kids that are graduating in mid-May? This is-
I bet this is going to be a big topic next week.
I went round and around with Pat over this. And, and what's even, what is even more distressing is, because I also had a conversation with her opponent, because she's on the ticket for tonight, and, and her opponent had no clue. Absolutely no clue.
It doesn't sound like Pat had much of one.
And Pat didn't have one.
Did you have a conversation with her? Chris had a conversation with her?
She sits on the convention.
She does. She's really, I will say to her credit, she's very interested in this work, and she's committed to hearing us. She was in a room of twenty of us at one time, all with similar backgrounds as myself. And we're, and we said, we appreciate you, however, listen to this part, and listen to this part. And so she was challenged a bit in that space, and she wrote down a lot of notes. Again, I think it sounds like-
She took ten pages of notes when I talked.
Yeah.
I mean, it's-
It's a, it's been complicated, for sure. So we know that whatever decision they make, we will continue. So if they say, fine, you've been extended, we know what to do. So rest assured, whatever they decide, we do know what to do. We know what to implement, and we'll do it as quickly as we can. And we've done it before, so we, we know how to do that process, and we will just institute it as fast as possible. So if it is February, you're talking about February, March, April, May. And if it's a capstone, it's going to be some hard work. It's some time-consuming work for kids to do that kind of work.
What I recommend, and seriously, and I'm going to make this plea out to everybody here, is, once this thing does hit the, the House Legislature Education Committee, they'll, they'll immediately, I have no, I have no problems with the Education Committee pushing this out, out of committee to the, to the open House floor. But everybody is going to have to make a plea to the House Speaker that this needs to be heard during the lame duck session, and it needs to be taken in up and down vote now. And it cannot wait until January. It has to be done now.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not fair to the educators and schools this year who have to deal with the sudden change.
My fear is the House Speakers, and especially if the House Speaker is changing. Right? Because everybody's up for grabs this year. So if the House Speaker changes, or, you know, you know, come January one, he's no longer the House Speaker, I mean, you know, what kind of interest is he really going to have in pushing anything out? So, but that plea has to be made, and it just can't be one or two people. Everybody's going to have to be making. And it's just not our district that's in the space. I mean, it's every public school district in the state, and nobody realizes.
For our thirty-two, bigger districts have a hundred and fifty. So there are a lot of students that are in this position right now, waiting to retake their tests. So they're going, I mean, they're working hard right now to retake. They know that's their path for most of them. So that's what we've been doing the tutoring sessions for and things like that.
So they're aware of the potential, like, families are aware, the students are aware?
Yeah, so Mr. Winteron and the Counseling Department, or the other administrators have all met individually with students that were in any kind of jeopardy from the beginning of the year until, I mean, that, those meetings have all occurred. So yes.
Is there a possibility for, like, let's say we get this rolling, and, you know, we, we are successful in getting those criteria back for our students, is there something we can do early, like, to prep them for a capstone now? Give them ideas for topics that they could maybe start researching before Christmas break? So that way they can hit the ground running if we get approval in January?
It sounds, that sounds decent in theory, but you don't want them to, to be dreaming of the capstone and not focus on that end of course exam in December?
No, I mean after that.
I know, but if we say, like, hey, by the way, there's this one chance that you could do this, they might say, I bet that will happen.
I wouldn't tell them until the test is done. Like, once they take the test and say, hey, guys, just so you know, we don't have your results yet, but if this happens, I want you over break to be brainstorming some ideas for a potential of a project that might save you some of your time when we come back, if we get the okay.
We'll know in December. I think we'll have an inclination of what's to come.
Okay.
I think. We'll know. So yes, to your point, after they take the test.
Yeah, after.
We're happy to do that.
I agree. They'll lose, they'll lose a little bit of that.
Because they'll think, why would an adult tell me this?
If it's not going to happen.
If it's not going to happen. Why would Mr. Munchen say anything if it's not going to be true? So that-
Right, yeah. I just want to give them as much time as feasibly possible, if that could be an option that we could potentially go forward with. Because that's really screwing them over to come back after break and then say, oh, yeah, now you have to come up with an idea. That cuts down even more time. And then we graduate, what, mid-May this year? So that's even less time. They don't even get the whole month of May.
Right.
So.
I think the most wonderful thing about this is generally people on the street think that you just show up to school, you pass your class, and you graduate. And what, what people are beginning to understand is, it is far more than what we experienced in high school. Far more than that. And that, that is healthy conversation. And I'm glad for them to learn that. But this is certainly not a, a good situation. So we hope-
I went through one of those transition years. It sucks as a senior to have that fallout from under you. It sucks.
Well, gowns have been ordered, announcements will be ordered. I mean, it's just, it's tough to not know if you're graduating. And for many of our families, particularly our students who are first generation grads, it's a big deal to graduate from high school. We'll continue to watch, and we'll turn on the next week when we go to our conference, state conference. We'll continue to watch and listen, perhaps some discussions may pop up. Our next panelist is the construction update. So I want to let you know about the middle school. The scaffolding has been assembled, and they will begin that abatement in the boys' gym very soon. It took them actually over a week to build that scaffolding. You can imagine the boys' gym-
All the way across.
Has that track above it. So they've gone to great length to protect the floor, protect the mat, protect a number of things. So plastic has been placed over what we're fondly calling mushrooms in the auditorium. Those little areas underneath each seat. So plastic has been placed over and around those mushrooms and under the seats so that when they begin to clean out the ductwork, the plenum area, that they, of course, none of that dust and dirt will come up into the auditorium. So of course, the auditorium at this point in time is, is closed off. And access will be made for other parts of the plenum through the girls' gym. So they'll be drilling holes through that ceiling also, which is an okay ceiling, does not need to be abated. And much of, more of that ductwork cleaning will take place. So the floor tile abatement in the third floor of the east wing, so we fondly remember that back in the days, the cafeteria. And recently, it's been used as the orchestra room. Now, that abatement has taken place, and that east wing on the third floor area is complete. They moved to the second floor where that abatement should be finished by the end of this week. If you want to see pictures of that, it really shows it on the webs, on our website. Just click Construction, and you'll see, actually, the third floor kind of cut it. So it's down to walls, if you will. We'll say, we're very excited to say that, remember, we talked a lot about material being stuck on the walls, and it would be really difficult to get that off? So we talked about enclosing that. But actually, it's come out splendidly well, and we're thinking that we're going to be able to save some money. That won't need a plastic enclosure. We'll still need the wall in front of it, but that will be able to save some there. So that's exciting, good news. The field house should be complete by November the sixteenth. And one of the challenges, the delay, we thought it was going to be November the ninth, but we had about thirty deteriorated ducks, elbow ducks, that had to be replaced. And so that's what caused the delay. So I thought tongue-in-cheek that perhaps we should be called Mighty Ducks. So that concludes my construction update. If you have any questions about that. So let's talk about where construction leads us in our future. So our intention is to return our attention to Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary. And our goal will be to go to bid in December, January, and really, truly, that's looking far more like January. In the bid, we intend to require the primary building to be completed this summer and ready for August 2019 without delay. So the question then to be answered is, what to do with the children in the elementary, which is grade three through six? And I want to keep in mind that when we went into this construction, we agreed that the sixth grade would all be moving to the middle school, that is, sixth through eighth building. And the sixth graders will be moving into a brand-new east wing, which will be ready in August of 2019. So in consideration for where to place students and teachers, we considered these main tenants. And these tenants are the best case for a high-quality education learning environment. The other was our neighborhood schools. We know that our community values neighborhood schools, so we wanted to keep, keep classes together, keep groups together. So we worked to keep all the students together rather than sending a grade to this building and another grade to that building. The other tenant was that the plan needed to be one that we could implement, perhaps, as we considered each of the elementaries. So looking next to Norwood View, followed by Williams, and then of course, ultimately, at the high school. So once we vetted and we considered all those tenants, and we vetted perhaps what our options would be, we've landed on what we think is the best option. Best option in keeping our community in their neighborhood schools or area, keeping grade levels together, and of course, the best learning environment. And so that, that led us to modulators. Modulators appear to be the best option for us as we move through construction for all of our elementaries. So we're, there's still more work to do with that thought, particularly with regard to cost. But it does appear, at this point in time, that that is the best financial decision, too. So we've kicked around, well, the modulators, of course, when we look at Sharpsburg Primary, we, we intend to use that building when we start in August. So that would be preschool, kindergarten, one, two, one and two. But we need to find three, four, five, a place to learn. When you consider the work that's going to take place at the primary and the elementary, it should take place over about six months. So they think that perhaps this will not take as long as they thought. One, because they've, we've learned a lot from the middle school. And that is that it's best not to have people in the building when you're trying to conduct the work. And because of the proximity of those two buildings, when they complete the primary, which would be the primary focus so that we can use that building, and all of that, our plan is contingent, certainly on that, is that students, then they can really focus on the elementary. And that is not as large of a space as, of course, the middle school is. So they think they can do that pretty expeditiously. At least, that's what our, our architect at this point anticipates with all of the work that they've done with construction and design. So we're, as we move, thinking about modulators, we're thinking about how can we cover, for example, walkways from the modulators to back into the primary building? Because we, of course, want to use that space for our cafeteria space. We've thought, thought a great deal about restroom facilities. It's likely that that would not be approved for us to use the primary building as our restroom facility just because of the number of people. So we would likely have modulators that have restroom facilities in them. And of course, you know, it, it'll be a challenge for all of us. As we know, construction is not exactly, it, it's an inconvenience, but it would be a temporary inconvenience for, again, six to nine months, essentially a school year. We'll have to be creative with it when it comes to physical education. But we, we talked on Awful, Not CrossFit, perhaps could be our new means of becoming physically fit. So it'll be an interesting opportunity, but we believe that modulators are the best way to keep students in their communities, not passing them to another area, and letting them see some of the construction that takes place, from a distance, of course. But we think it's the best also for education. It would still provide them with, of course, heat, but air conditioning.
How big are modulars?
Well-
Depends on the one you buy.
Right, it does depend on which one you rent or purchase. But essentially, they are, they will hold one classroom, I'm sorry, they will hold two classrooms. And so I think they're forty by eighty, is that what we decided? There were a couple that we looked at. I believe they're about forty, twenty-six, twenty-four by sixty-four.
And how many classrooms do we need to accommodate?
Well, that changes as you go to Norwood View. But if you start at Sharpsburg, we thought about eight.
We need eight classrooms, so four units?
Eight modulars.
Or eight modulators?
Eight modulators.
Okay. What does a classroom size look like in this?
Well, there's some work yet to be done there that will likely be adjusted to it a bit.
Because they're like trailers, offering-
Oh, I've, I've worked in modulators before. I'm just wondering, like, based on our size, is it possible for us to maximize the number of students in a classroom? Maybe double up for teachers, teacher-to-student ratio?
Of course.
To cut down on the number of modulators that we may need?
I think my pitch tonight is really to help you to understand is that that's the direction we're going.
Okay.
And, and, and that I, I intend to investigate it further with regard to purchasing versus renting. It appears at this point in time, renting does, does seem to be the best. We do have drawings where modulators could be placed. And we've investigated the cost of setup, because, of course, there's setup there with projectors, setup there with facilities, underskirting, and then, of course, repair, perhaps asphalt, when you move them. The nice thing about renting would simply be that while we're, you don't have to wait for your own people to move out of them to have some place at another site. So for example, while we're moving into the elementary, you know, the modulators could remain here on site, and we could have others delivered to perhaps Norwood View, I mean, in that process. So it seems to be a bit more seamless versus if you buy them, and you're waiting for them to be emptied, and then you've got to move them somewhere. So that package price, and again, things can change. We talked about sometimes you can purchase used ones, and that could, could open up a different cost. But I think my, my hope tonight is to just share with you that modulators, we believe, are the best case scenario for moving forward, getting students out of the building, and teachers out of the building so that we can conduct the really necessary work that needs to happen.
So twenty, twenty-four by sixty-four modular holds two classrooms?
Yes.
And then what is the typical capacity of kids and adults in a classroom in one of those modulators?
So the data that you have in your hand right now was shared with our architect, and we looked at it as needing about eight of those.
So that's sixteen classrooms?
No, it's not.
So you said, said one modular holds two classrooms?
That's right. So we would need about four of those.
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
You said eight modulars. So we need four modulars for eight classrooms.
That's right.
Eight classrooms.
It's likely that we would order more.
And that's just-
And the reason for that is because we have a lot of support services that we would need to be able to provide for that. For example, in a heart room, for example, therapy, for example, speech. There, there are a number of support services where we would likely need more rooms.
Would it behoove us to purchase one or two modulators and rent the remainder? So that way we can have a couple that are just ours for use as needed? And then rent the rest so that they can be in motion as where we need them?
It's certainly possible. All of those things are possible. I think my thoughts tonight, really to get, get your feedback on how you feel about the concept of modulators.
I'm for it. I just want to weigh the cost option with us, maybe purchasing a couple used ones that we could keep on property as needed if, God forbid, a delay happens or something like that. We could at least have a couple transition rooms. We could at least have a couple transition rooms while the rest of them are moving around the district to keep things rolling.
Right. The reason this is important, because it will guide our work more so with regard to our fiscal responsibility, but more than that, it really helps us with our planning and the scope work that we're trying to come bring to a conclusion. Because when we go to bid, this all plays a part of that bid. How much money, and of course, Julie's keeping a good eye on that, but how much we are spending. We can all think of probably perhaps options that might be less expensive. But I think when I go back to those tenants, it really begins to put those into play. You know, our middle school is a beautiful place, but it's not made for small children to learn. It was made for high school and middle school. So, as I consider all of those things that we vetted out, that's what I bring to you tonight, because I think modulators are the best option as we move forward with our construction project. Now, what that looks and sounds like with regard to rent, purchasing, used, or buying, that, that remains to be seen. In fact, in some cases, as we looked, you know, replacement of them remains to be seen. If we were just talking about Shersford Elementary and Primary, right now, we're considering just placing them on the primary site where everyone is on that site, and of course, the noise level is across the road, and all of the trucks and trailers that come with construction, we say, out of that way. It will cause its own problems, parking, parking will be a problem, drop-off will be a problem. But again, those are temporary, because there will be resolution for that, and that is all in the scope. Are there thoughts on modulators?
I like it, I mean, because if you move, you can't really, if we move the kids to another school or something like that and start busing, then we're never going to be able to get away from busing. Everybody's going to be like...
Well, we're good.
Our district isn't set up for busing.
I think it could create attendance issues.
Plus, if you start busing, it opens up the non-transferable students. Now, all of a sudden, we're paying busing for all the other kids that are leaving the district, where now we, apparently, we don't do that because we don't bus.
Is there space in the middle school for fifth grade once construction is completed? Or what are the pros and cons? Because I'm sure you probably thought about moving to sixth grade as well.
We have discussed that. We have not looked room to room, but we have considered that, but not at grade line.
Because we could also, like, put temporary walls or something on that third floor, large room, you know, think places like that.
I've worked in...
That might make sense for us to move to the sixth grade.
I've worked in a five-six building, and I've worked in a five-through-eight building, and it works splendidly, I will tell you. With fifth-grade learners, they're much more elementary. So, it does seem appropriate at this time to keep them in the elementary, but it would, it would create a great deal of space.
If we were only moving the fifth grade of the elementary that was being directly affected at the time, so let's say we only need four classroom spaces. If we divided that third floor up into three classroom sizes, then we'd only have to find one more room to move up just, you know, this year, Williams' fifth grade is here, this year, View's fifth grade is here. And we just keep it set up for a couple of years while we move the fifth grade, we wouldn't need as many modular units on property. They'd already be coming there for sixth grade the next year anyway.
We talked about that.
It might be a good temporary solution. I would not want to keep all fifth grade at the middle school, but if we only needed it for a couple of years for a couple of classrooms per elementary, that might save us quite a bit of money.
I'm not comfortable putting them in there at all. I'm struggling with the sixth grade. My first question was, is all of the sixth grade going back to the sixth grade? So, first of all, logistically there, we've got timelines and constraints, and we've got to tell the parents about the next year they're going to be moving to there.
That would be February.
Looking back, when my kids were in school, prior to getting on the board, one of the driving forces to being on the board was seeing sixth graders pregnant, because they were in the middle school and there was no control. That was, it was a nightmare. And we've now thrust these kids that are used to being in an elementary environment into an adult environment, and they're being, they're being terrorized or taken advantage of in different ways. I struggle with that. So, fifth grade for me, that's not an option right now. I want to make sure we got sixth grade under control and sixth grade taken care of, and those kids are still safe kids before I would even want to look at the fifth grade going up, because I do remember the past. And I remember, that's why we brought sixth grade back down, is because we had so many problems.
And I would want our parents to know that our sixth grade teachers will be going with our sixth grade students.
Does it make a difference? Yeah, it happened the last time. Sixth grade teachers went with...
I was in sixth grade at the middle school, I never had any issues like that.
That is one unique experience, when, you know, I mean, you have to...
I loved it.
What parents, how parents feel and how the kids are feeling about it. You know, maybe I'm only speaking to a certain sect of folks, but by and large, this is not a good feeling about sending these kids up there, that's a lot of transportation, so...
I think it's just because it's what you've gotten used to. For me, it was like, I felt too old for the elementary school as a sixth grader. So, when I went up to the middle school, I was like...
It's a decision that's been made, it's been made already, but I would feel remiss to not have your comments, that it was... It was made during construction.
Right.
That was the, that was the clarifier. We can certainly move just the sixth grade to, from Shersford to the middle school during construction. But I think it's perhaps maybe disingenuous if we intend for that to become a sixth through eight building.
Once it's ready, I think we need to use the middle school for its intended purpose and put the sixth grade as a group there so that the sixth grade can acclimate again.
That wasn't its intended purpose, though. I mean, its intended purpose was a high school, so it was a...
I'm saying for us to go back to a six, seventh, eighth building, then we need to do six, not part of six, part of...
I was in school with a seven, eight, nine building.
Right.
So, I mean, we've...
I understand. We moved it, we've changed it, we moved it back. I'm saying if we're going to go back to a six, seven, eight building, then we need to do all six at the same time so that they can acclimate as a, as a grade level. Those kids can all come back in together.
And it would give us a free-year window to check, to see how this works during the construction.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, is there any data out there that the difference between...
I have to go, I'm going to be very late.
Six, seven, eight, them?
You know, I can investigate that.
You know, as far as, you know, does it really affect the chat?
I think people make work what they want to make work.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of it has to do with leadership.
I agree with that completely. So, I think part of the reason why it didn't work in first-place Scott is because the leadership of the building wasn't...
It was atrocious.
Wasn't, wasn't right for what it had in there.
It was, and I would agree with you a hundred percent. But on the other side of it, you know, we've got good leadership now, but we're not going to be on the board forever.
I'm not talking about the board, I mean, we're...
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying we're not going to be on the board forever, so we're not going to be controlling who's in the leadership in the middle school forever. And what's going to stop it from going backwards? Because had you asked the board, when they move the sixth grade up there, are you going to have poor leadership in the middle school? They'd be like, no, no, we're going to have great leadership, always going to have strong leadership. But somebody dropped the ball, and it comes back down to the seat. And I make, we're making decisions now that's going to affect the kids ten years from now. And I want to make sure that we're making the right decision. So, and I want it to be right no matter who's sitting in Joe Miller's seat, because it's got to be strong.
No, it does, it definitely has to be strong, so...
I commend all of you for your determination to make sure things are great for our kids. I think that, that's really commendable, and certainly, that's why people vote freely to be on the board. We want, regardless of what grade level you're in, to have an amazing learning experience. And I can tell you that at middle school, with its sixth through eight, that we're working to that end. And I think, too, as we move through this construction, we're working to that end, too. And that is to make sure that, while it's inconvenient for teachers and students and even parents, that it will be as best as we can possibly make it, because we don't want to forfeit an amazing education.
Now, right now, at the middle school, we have a principal and assistant principals.
A dean.
A dean.
We have an assistant principal?
No, we just have a dean.
We just have a dean.
If we're going to do that, I mean, my opinion of, if we're going to do like six, seven, eight, then maybe we don't need a dean, maybe we need two assistant principals.
Or two deans, so we have a...
No, I think it can, yeah.
So, I hear...
That's a straight position.
I...
So, they can't sign off on...
That makes sense.
I mean, I think, when we get to that, I think that's something that we really need to roll out.
That is something that I've considered, and I do have plans for that.
Only because you could have assistant principal basically over the sixth grade.
That's right, that's right.
Bring up out of that, and...
Yes.
I'm looking forward to giving that space back to our elementaries, too, because I've been in there, it's so crowded. We're still limited on space. To give them back that sixth grade room space to grow and to kind of stretch their arms, I think it's going to help the elementary schools breathe a little easier to have sixth grade back out, because our buildings are just small, and...
I don't know how they keep through eight, but...
I don't either. But I think, I think it will benefit if we're planning ahead, we're getting the right administration there, it'll give our elementary schools a little bit more wiggle room. And I think if we're really planning ahead for our middle school to benefit our sixth graders, I think it'll, it'll let everybody stretch a little bit. We have the space, our middle school's huge. I think it's, it's built to handle more than two grade levels, and I want to give that back to our elementary schools. Our teachers have deserved it, they've been working out of closets and showers, converted showers. I really want to give that space back to them.
Well, I appreciate your direction, and that helps me to know that I can break to you our numbers and we'll make some formal decisions when we're done, so thank you for that.
All right. I'm going to read this and run, guys. This is my volunteer night at Children's Hospital, so I have to go after this. The education dates for January's board meetings are on for approval. January eighth meeting, we have the organizational tax budget and records commission meeting, as well as our committee meeting. And then, our regular board meeting will be scheduled for the seventeenth. And those are the only dates coming up for January so far. Thank you.
Mr. President of the Board, I'd like for just consideration on two resignations. Michelle May of Hope, and I'd just like to note, she's a Norwood student, and of course, became a delivery teacher and is now retiring, so we're excited for her. Deb Robinson is resigning, she is going to be joining the team at Miami University and working more with mental health there, so we're excited for her.
We are going to back over position quickly, hopefully, because Deb provides...
I think it provides us a great opportunity to be a bit innovative. So, we'll be looking at overall how our mental health services are disseminated, as well as orchestrated within our district.
That is a crucial piece. She does things that no one knows about, and she's working a year in advance of the rest of us. So, I mean, I don't want to see that set empty at all. Personally, I want to see it filled.
So, I do think the position needs to be filled. However, she is our primary resource for grant writing within the district, or if you will. I would likely see this district look at a professional grant writer on staff. I know I've brought it up a couple of times, but now that Deb's going to leave a void in the vacuum. I know mental health services is important, I mean, but everybody has seen our five-year forecast, and we've got to find a way to kind of do some gap closing with some fundraising and a professional grant writer on staff to help to serve and fill that role.
I think Deb represents certainly her work in the community and also the mental health work. So, she has lots of tenants out there with regard to her work, and I think that's challenging to find someone who writes grants specific to mental health needs that can be used in the school district, as well as, for example, say, Rastischool, someone who might have a relationship with their good folks in the city. And so, that's why I think this is an opportunity to be innovative in that, I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't replace the position, but perhaps folks that could do other roles, with perhaps the exception of community organizing. So, I'm excited about what opportunity this affords us. So, we'll be investigating that and looking at what our options are. And our intentions are to attend, begin working at Miami in January, January seventh.
So, that gives us such a small window to...
A very small window.
Is there a way to...
I wish she was...
Like, yeah, kind of change a lot of the construction hours?
She, she's working on that now, actually. Norwood Ready Kids is one of those.
Well, I mean, the different jobs that she does.
All the different things she touches.
Yeah, all the different things she touches, so that, you know, this might be a situation where we need to hire a grant writer and have somebody else do, you know, a lot of the other stuff that she's...
I'm just afraid that this is a house of cards, that we take her out and don't realize that she's connected to all these other things, and it's just going to keep in. And all of a sudden, our mental health services that are so highly touted throughout, not only our city, but our state and our country, and sometimes globally, because I noticed that some of the things we're doing here are being done on the other side of the world now that we pilot it. If we take her out and don't look at it closely, then we're going to be the one who's copying other people instead of setting the trend. And I don't want to, I don't like copying, so I'd say.
So, our mental health therapists will remain unchanged, and that is our relationship with Tower House. And I spoke with one of their directors this morning on my way in, and nothing will, will change with regard to who we have in place right now. And so, actually, he's ensured me that perhaps if therapists do elect to work in a different capacity in another school district, that they've just hired a number of very talented, actually, large-scale folks, I feel confident about that. But that service will not change, we'll still provide that mental health therapy to students. Deb just serves as the liaison with Tower House and therapists.
I don't know if I agree with that at all. She did more of the service liaison, she created the relationship, to maintain the relationships, and sought out new relationships from the times I've dealt with her. And I dealt with her before we hired her in the district, and that was one of the reasons that we pursued her was because of what she did bring to the table. So, I mean, I don't mean to disagree with you, but I agree with you.
No, no, she has worked for the district for six years.
She has.
She has, she has.
She's been in the district, though, for longer than that. I don't know how many, I know it's longer than thirteen, so...
I think it's close to nineteen years, I think she mentioned that. So, I certainly would not want to give the impression that I am denouncing her role, I'm simply saying that this is an opportunity for us to be a bit innovative and look at that role, that coordinator role, as in, what more could we do? For example, at the high school, we're looking to create a program called the Hope Squad. Many other schools have that. So, this would be one other agency or organization that will provide leadership skills for our students with regard to serving students that perhaps have mental health needs. So, there are a number of programs that we don't have in place now, and perhaps the person who could do this role would just be able to do even more. And so, I'm excited about what the opportunity will afford us. And we will miss Ms. Robinson. No certainty.
So, whether you're getting grants, or something like that, is that person available to? Or grant writing, or anything?
Likely with regard to mental health, because most, much of that is writing a grant for two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars. Some of hers have been more, right? And she has been in the business for quite some time and has a number of connections, which is always helpful. I think I'm suggesting that doesn't have to be a social worker, which is what Deb is. What I'm suggesting is that person doesn't necessarily need to be a... And can still do these liaison-type things. Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, to be a liaison doesn't necessarily mean you're a conventional agent. And to have good relationships with Tower House, that is not hard, those are great people. So, she is resigning. For employment, I have Maggie Donlin for soccer tournament. Number two, Chris Nelson, high school wrestling volunteer. Avenue's for success, a number of club advisors. A tradesman position, Tim Loon, as you know... So she is resigning. Um, for employment, I have Maggie Donlin for soccer tournament. Um, number two, Chris Nelson, high school wrestling volunteer. Avenue's for success, number of club advisors, um, a tradesman position, Tim Loon, as you know, um, he's a, a one and only kind of person when it comes to what he does and the union that he belongs to. Um, elementary productions, um, and these are things that happen annually. Um, and then number six is a pupil activity contract. So that is a middle school wrestling volunteer, Chris Couch, again, soccer tournament, John Jackson. Resignation from Steve Muldro for varsity assistant wrestling at point five. And then changes status from point five to one full-time equivalent for varsity assistant wrestling. And that includes employment.
Um, one thing for avenues for success. So I was going over the, um, the agenda and the itinerary for, um, the Capitol Conference next week. And so they have a student fair.
Yes.
Success Fair. And so I think it would be interesting or I think it would be fantastic if we could showcase something like avenues for success and at that event in the future here. I don't know, has Norwood ever done that in the past? Send a group of people up to showcase at the Capitol Conference.
Oh, yeah.
I remember.
I believe we have.
Yes, once seen.
I believe we had one time a group of students that attended that fair. I just wanna make sure I'm remembering that conference, cause there was another opportunity, but I, it was a while ago, but we did have a student group.
Yeah. I mean, like Goshen's got like the robotics club that's exhibiting or something like that. And, I mean, it's like school districts from all across the state. And, and I, you know, and I'm just thinking about all the great things that we do here within our district. And I was trying to think of what would I like to see there in that event, and avenues to success came to mind. That, that would be something fantastic that we could showcase in the future.
Yeah.
Capitol Conference. All right. So, um, this month we are gonna have the second reading of our massive policy manual. Um, and then immediately following, um, the second reading, we'll then make a motion to adopt a new policy manual. Um, now, also with that, um, and this is something that was discussed at the last committee meeting, was that one policy where we had to choose one of the three different options. Has everybody looked at that and made a decision as to how they want to go? I know my purpose will be the second. Is everybody okay with that? Then, then what we'll do there is for that one policy, we'll do the first reading of that one policy and then it'll be the second version.
So it's gonna be the first reading?
The first reading of that one policy.
Okay. So that wouldn't cover being read already last month?
No, because last month there was three different, there was three different versions. So now that everybody's had a chance to review it and look at it and we just say, hey, the second option is the language that we wanna use, we'll do the first reading for that one policy. But we're gonna do the second reading and adoption of.
The rest of it?
The whole entire manual.
Does the whole entire manual include the hearing of the public? Does that include the policy on the hearing of the public?
Um, yes, it does.
If you wanted to have it removed separately, then we'll remove out the hearing of the public.
Do we ever hear back from legal counsel on their official stance on hearing of the public?
We did. We have two, two different, um, it, it's up to you.
Wow. Cause when I asked her, what everybody else, she was telling everybody else to do since that everybody else changed it.
Well, um.
To.
I, I would tell you, legal counsel can, um, oftentimes will, can disagree with one another.
Yeah.
So I have one that says, I would advise you to. I have one that says, you know what? Absolutely not. Keep it as is. Wait until you're challenged.
And my thought is, yeah, if, if, if we're not gonna keep it as is, if we're gonna change it, then the only way I would even consider it is to abolish it. No hearing of the public. Because if you open it up for everyone, then, um. You have to have a hearing of the public.
I'm, I'm just telling, you don't ask, that's not what she said. She said you could remove the hearing of the public.
No, I, I think what she's saying is.
Policies, I think, what she meant.
Oh, well, then, I mean, I'm, I'm just, from what I've seen, when you open it up to everybody, you're opening it up to a can of worms that's, you're never gonna be able to close.
Okay. So how about this then? We have four different line items. And we bring this back to you guys. One of them will be all of the ones that are not in question. One of them will be for a first reading for the one with the second, that we're choosing the second option. And we're gonna have a third and fourth option for public participation. One reserved to just community members and one for everybody. And we'll take a vote on all four of them. So you're suggesting take a vote on those last two options? Last two will be in either or.
So you'll have a policy at the end of the meeting, whether it's everyone or just the Norwood people. So it's, so for me, I would vote no on the everybody, but yes for the Norwood.
Correct. Are you allowed to pull a policy for further discussion and not move forward with adoption at this stage? You can always table it.
Yeah, it, it, it can be tabled. Um, so.
I think we should table it.
I, I, I think, I think we should table at, at least the, the public.
Good.
That one policy.
That, that one policy.
And let's discuss it in one.
And let's discuss it at next month's committee meeting.
Yeah, I can deal with that.
Um, and that way we don't have to, because, you know, if you vote up or down on one, then you still have to do the, the, the readings, right? So let's just table that, we'll just pull that policy out. We'll adopt the manual minus, minus the two policies, the one that we're gonna do the first reading on.
Sure.
And then the other one, which we're gonna discuss in committee in December.
And you have more policies to update even then?
And, right, absolutely. I'm, I'm good with that.
I appreciate it.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, we wanna do, do things well.
Oh, oh, right. Now we do have any, okay. I, I just got one, one item that's a deck for the sub-del users in this one, please. So it's good to see that.
So just so everybody knows, um, that's a six thousand dollar revenue income for the use of that space.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it, it was Purcell, remind me. Purcell didn't pay.
Right. I, I think some of those can pay.
Yeah, well, they, they can, but well, the, they paid in the past. It was Purcell, Purcell could have paid in the past, but they didn't.
Yeah. In the stadium.
And, yeah.
And they, if they didn't pay the bill, then they shouldn't be using it.
They didn't.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay, uh, finance?
Oh, thanks to Mr. President. I have treasurer's monthly report. I changed things up a little bit. There's a new format. So, um, if you get a chance to read over it before the next meeting, let me know your thoughts on the new format. Financial summary report, check register report, both of them. Monarch construction change order spreadsheet, that was just updated today. I apologize for that, but that is out there now for you to review. And then enrollment reports that I put, put on paper on your desk for your use as needed. I wanted to bring out to your attention, especially on my treasurer's report, the first attachment under finance. There's a graph in there on open enrollment out in community school, out costs. There's quite a decline in those costs in the last two years, so I wanted to brag about that. I think that's, um, going in the right direction and, um, more of our students are choosing to stay here at Norwood, which is wonderful. Eight point oh two, appropriation resolution and four twelve agreement. Eight point oh three, resolution giving me authorization to file a modified tax budget for the next year. Eight point oh four, uh, then and now purchase orders. I don't have anything listed as now. Um, I just wanted to leave that open, cause I know I have one that I will have to put out there. The then and now purchases are slowing down as people are getting more training and learning how to do things properly, which I appreciate. Eight point oh five, we have two donations. Um, fifteen hundred for basketball, boys' basketball, and four ninety-four forty-four for botany class. Eight point oh six, transfers and advances. Um, new information has come to me that I don't need to advance to a negative fund every month. Um, it's kind of an overkill on my part. If it goes negative at the end of the month, as long as it's not the end of June, I can leave it negative as long as I can prove that I have enough money in the general fund to cover that negative balance. So therefore, just to be transparent, I wanna let you know what is negative. Of course, this month, it's just cafeteria fund that is negative by a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
Is that just because of, um, purchases? Just?
They, they have not gotten their federal reimbursement in yet.
Federal reimbursement.
Yeah.
Now, um, when is that expected?
It should be in, in the next two to three weeks, I would think. I don't think that's gonna be big enough to cover the negative balance and what they owe the general fund already.
Okay.
Um, but then from now on, the federal, the federal reimbursements will come in monthly. So that'll help them get more caught up.
Okay.
We have encouraged him to, um, purchase commodities.
Yeah.
Um, which are free and then make meals using those. So, um, Julie's been instrumental in helping to lead our reporting that way. And then didn't you mention nineteen more students?
That was last week. In last week, he, we've, we've asked Roger to do a sweep. Um, there's a way that he can do a sweep for free and reduced.
Yeah.
So that parents don't have to fill out paperwork. It's called direct certification, I think. And he's doing that like twice a week now. Or he was doing it once a month. So he's doing it twice a week until he stops seeing new enrollments.
Right.
Um, and we made some other changes for new students coming in so that we have more one-on-one time with their parents for that free and reduced application.
Gotcha.
Um, he's really trying to emphasize breakfast because we are already free and reduced, we are already free breakfast for everybody in the district. So he's really trying to, to bump up breakfast, uh, for student, for, for money and for students' health, so that they get a, a meal every morning.
So, and, and just, this, this may be a silly question, but, um, historically, has our food service always ran in the negative?
I think it's traditional. I think it's expected for a lot of school districts anymore, ever since they've made all those food changes, what, five, six years ago. Just that those new nutrition standards were really hard to overcome.
It's just.
And to get kids to eat.
Yeah.
Very expensive and children don't wanna eat it, so.
But you do have exemplar or an exemplar, um, that is able to run and, and to run in a lot.
Yes.
And so we've reached out to that individual and have been sharing tips, um, so that we can, can move in a lot.
Yeah. And we've even gotten like recipes that, that she's been very helpful. Um, not just good, good different policies to have, but actual recipes that are already proven that children like, so.
Children like, will eat, and then that will help us with our wastage.
If we could get our participation up, then we would, our revenue would be higher, of course. Um, so that's what our goal is, to get the participation up.
How many, um, I'm just wondering off the top of my head, how many kids pack?
Not sure.
Our participation.
A few years ago, when I was at the middle school, and it was essentially about one table.
And then my other.
They seemed to all be in the same group or class.
Or only one or two.
Our participation rates for free and reduced are pretty high, in the seventy percentile range.
Well, that's because the majority of our students that we serve are economically disadvantaged.
Right. But those are the ones that are, I mean, that, those have always been the ones that are the most high priority for me.
Right.
When I think about who should be eating is, is the free and reduce. So with that being at seventy percent, I do feel pretty good about that. We still have work to do, a lot of work to do. To get it profitable.
To, to Scott's point, um, they will not, some will not go to the line.
Right.
So a lot of those commodity things are things that, um, while it can sound old, but we grew up eating it, we really enjoy them. And so, um, we've encouraged him to bring some of those things back.
Eight point oh seven, we have the Scarlet and Gray cleaning service contract. That's a three-year contract. You probably remember that Ernie, um, had got the quotes on that about six months ago.
Yeah, about six months ago or probably a little longer, I asked Ernie if he would weigh out the cost of Scarlet and Gray versus bringing our own people and us doing this again with having a person in each building. Was that ever, did he ever get a chance to do that?
Well, there are several things about having onsite custodians. For one, in a time of, of good profit, it's not a recession anymore. It's hard to find custodians. Because all those people that are good with their hands and like fixing things are out building businesses and homes. So it's very, very difficult to find custodians when there's a good economy going on. Secondly, is the way our union contract is written right now, those would be full-time positions with benefits. So that would be, that would be very hard to be profitable, to be, um, a good cost savings for us. Now, looking forward, we can work with our union agreement, see if we can make some changes in there so that we can get some onsite people that belong to us.
I mean, and, and that's what I told last year. I mean, and so, I mean, it, it, not you, I get it.
So we did kick around the numbers, Scott, Julie and I did. We, we thought about when you consider that five people and then what happens if they take a day off? And then who monitors them? It got expensive. It did get expensive. And then we need.
I understand it gets expensive. I, I do. I, I understand that. Um, this is not a cheap contract though. This is, you know, we're paying for this and it does put somebody in our building, so it does provide security for our building. And it does give us the ability to do things on off hours for some maintenance work. Um, so that was the reason I had asked before to consider it. And I just wanted to see some comparisons. And then, um, I, I was curious and I hate to sign a three-year contract without seeing that, because I wouldn't like to see.
I can get some numbers together for you.
That would be great. And, and I know it would be full-time and I know they would have benefits. We'd have to figure the maximum benefits. But I just wanna see if it, it doesn't make any sense for us to have somebody in the building. Cause right now, we, I, do we still have somebody running around the district at night in security? The.
We do, our custodians do.
So, uh, we're, we're still doing that. We're, we're having someone do that. Scarlet and Gray, um, they do an, an okay job. I'm not gonna say they do a great job. They do an okay job. Um, they're in the buildings for a couple of hours and that's it. If we had somebody here all night, it, it may make a difference. I don't know.
Okay.
Just a thought.
I can get our square footage together and get, and ask around some other districts.
If you could, thank you.
Yeah.
I think it would be important for one person to go there. I mean, even in the hallways, there's somebody standing here, somebody there, stairs, somebody this way.
That's good enough for two hours. I mean, if this is someone doing it for eight hours a night, they wouldn't have to, I mean, they could go and wash down the desks every night. I don't know how long.
It's not for coffee, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm used to working with, yeah. Lots of monitoring that.
Yeah, that would, that would be the way to start.
So do we put this back out the bid for other people?
No. No, it was, it's, it's not required to go to bid again, since it was just six months ago. Actually, it's not required to be bid out. Um.
I understand it's not required to be bid out. I mean.
Competition.
But competition's a good thing, isn't it?
Yeah. The, the other quotes that we got just four or five months ago were extreme, much higher.
They use the same people.
They were much higher than Scarlet and Gray.
Right. They hired the Scarlet and Gray people and that's what.
I can get that information together too.
I walked through buildings and didn't see any difference. Um, this was back.
Janico.
Yeah. No, this was, this was, sorry, this was before the Janico.
Oh, okay.
Because the, the people that came in, that was when Matt Freeman and, and then we built up middle school. And we got complaints every day about the conditions of the middle school. And I would walk around, didn't see any difference compared to when Scarlet and Gray was there, because it was the same people doing the cleaning, cause they hired Scarlet and Gray group. But somebody wasn't gonna kick that. But, but remind you.
We, we have to use the online system so teachers can report if something is not complained appropriately. So they are monitoring that daily. Um, and that, that is working. Um, and actually Scarlet and Gray really enjoys that because there's a record of, of course, a concern and then they take care of it. So.
So what is, or is that information in surveillance? So what is, or is that information that's available to find out? You know, how many of those punchless requests? Or, I mean, how many of those are, are Scarlet and Gray giving? So how many, how many of our teachers are complaining?
Reporters.
Yeah.
Well, before, there was this perception that things weren't being addressed. And I think we went through with their principles, principles of no problems, nothing's being reported. So we gave, we pressed that outlet to everyone, anyone could report something.
Right.
That's not being addressed, so.
So is anybody reporting?
Yes, but not often.
Okay.
No. No, it's not a great concern. But, you know, perhaps we can report that some Lysol wipes were left over there, something of that nature. But it's not extraordinary. It's not as though they're not doing...
I, I agree with Brandon, though. Competition's a good thing.
Okay.
We put it off the bid, sometimes you get one person back, sometimes you get eight people back. At least it keeps Scarlet and Gray honest with bidding process.
So do you wanna see the quotes from six months ago, or do you want me to, to bid it out again?
I wouldn't want to see it bid out again.
I, I, I wouldn't either, because what that does is, a lot of those other companies that may have bid six months ago, and they realize that they didn't land the contract the first time, may come back with a little bit sharper pencil.
Okay.
Or keep their bid high, because they just don't wanna run through this.
Well, then they'll fit, yeah.
Or, or they'll be the topic.
Yeah. If they get it, they're gonna, yeah, they're, it's good money, I'll say.
Okay. So then 8.08 interstate gas supply contract. So, one of the things Ernie had asked me to do when I came on board was to check our electric and our gas supply rates. We do bid those out to get, to get better rates. And I realized that our gas rates were back to a variable rate with Duke. So I knew that was something that I needed to work on right away. So I did, I got bids on that, and I have a contract here for you. Now, when, when I do these bids, it, there's a big time crunch there. At my last position, I would go ahead and sign the contract, and send it off, and get the rates, and take it to the board, and have it outdated. So I'm bringing that to you, to see how, what you think about that. 'Cause like today's contract, I need to sign it and get it back to him right away, because the rate is really good. And I guess Energy Futures, or whatever they're called, just came out with a new forecast. And now they're saying we're gonna have a colder winter, and that caused a spike in the market. And so these things, you know, I, I'm not a futures trader, I don't know anything about this stuff. I just, I just need some electric and gas at a decent rate for the district, so we can save some money. So when they tell me I need to get it back fairly soon, I, I'd like to get it turned around in two or three days, which is hard to do with a board approval.
So with this, with this fixed price of $3.99 with this other company, but Duke Energy of Ohio is still the distribution company, so we're still gonna get a bill from Duke?
Yes, and actually, this bill is gonna come, the supply, supplier bill is gonna be on the Duke bill also. It'll just go to IGS. So we still are only gonna have one bill.
Right. So how, so as Duke being the distribution company, how, how much is that fee?
The total we're paying right now is $4.4270 unit. And of course, this new rate is $3.99.
Right, I know it's $3.99, but it's gonna be $3.99 plus whatever Duke charges.
Those are the totals. That's what they, it's, he, he did it all in the email, I can send it to you. There's no way I could explain all this, 'cause it's, I always thought electric was really complicated with demand and, you know, usage and everything else. But evidently, gas is even more, more complicated than...
What I'm, what I'm just concerned about is, you know, we're gonna be locked into this rate with IGS. And we're thinking we're gonna be saving money. But when we get our bill, we're gonna have another line item charge from Duke as the distribution supplier, on top of the $3.99. And so at the end of the day, we're gonna be paying more than the variable rate that we're paying right now.
It's not. He, he, he already combined all those rates for me. I'm comparing apples and apples when I, when I do these.
My experience, it's not bad.
Is it gendered, or homonormative, or school?
It, it just, when you go with another servicer for your energy, and you have a different distribution company, so there's a fee charge. They will still provide surcharges on that bill.
For your infrastructure.
For your infrastructure, or for whatever. I mean, some of the fees, I think they make up, just to add fees.
It must be, because I gotta do, I had a different supply than Duke.
Right.
Gas and electric, but I didn't make it.
But you didn't get a lower bill?
Yeah, I did, actually. I didn't, I don't have all my extra fees.
Yeah. That, that's my concern, is, is the extra fees that would be added as the distribution supplier.
Yes, so like on this, on this email he sent to me today, it says, "It appears that your variable price is NYM," which I guess is New York Stock Exchange, "at .5950." So you would be paying $3.55 plus .595 equals $4.145. So he's already adding all that in. And then there's a burner tip, BTU conversion, and a burner tip and shrinkage, which will add another .28. So there are a lot of other fees, but it looks like he's adding them. He's already taking those into consideration.
Okay. So when, so is this gonna, so are we going to use in this contract, are we gonna use these numbers of the volumes at the burner tip in estimating what our bill's gonna be?
I don't understand.
So, contract volumes at the MCF price at the burner tip. So it looks like for January, we're estimating that we're gonna use 4,918 MCFs at $3.99 per MCF. So that means that our bill is gonna be, what, $12,000? Right, four times, we're gonna sixteen.
So if we don't use all of them, we charge for them?
No. And...
If we go over, is it at $3.99?
Yes. Yes, it is. Let me see.
So, so when we go back and compare this, I mean, you know, if we use the 4,918, and we get our bill, and it's $16,000 or $20,000, right? Then we know that we're being charged right. But if we get our bill, and our bill, we've used the 4,918, plus, plus, we're supposed to have $25,000.
Those are issues.
There are issues, and there are other fees. So, that's, that's my concern.
I will talk to him again about it.
But if he verifies that is the case...
It's an all-inclusive price, there's no other fees from Duke?
Then I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem signing it and sending it back to him.
Okay.
If only all the months could be like June.
Yeah. That's a good-looking month. Okay, so then, 8.09, the last thing under finance, Monarch Construction Change Order. "We are anticipating a change order to rebuild the East Wing." We do not have those facts yet back from Monarch for the basis of the change order, but I wanted to put it on here, so that we knew it was coming. And it should be significant. I'm thinking five, six, 700,000 dollars, probably.
But is that gonna keep us in line with what we estimated that portion to be?
Last week's?
Because I think we're looking at about 1.2, 1.3?
And last we talked to the architect, he said that it was looking pretty positive, that we were gonna be able to stay within that 1.1.
Okay.
Even though we did significantly more abatement than was first estimated in that 1.1.
And then, now we know how to properly bid at a tougher rate?
Yes, yes.
We have professionals on hand with Mac Perrin that's really working to our advantage.
So the new company that...
The maintenance.
Yeah.
Professionals of, of materials material.
Right.
Right.
Um, I just, on our radar, of course, we've talked a lot about pertussis lately. And we got our most recent, this is a middle school student related to a high school student that was diagnosed with that. And of course, those, that email went out to all middle school students and teachers, as well as the, the child has a sibling at Williams. So that email went out to Williams' parents and students. So just, just for knowledge, of course, if you are immunized, you could still get pertussis, but it would be, um, not as full-blown. Kinda like if you get the flu shots, legendary numbers bad. But, um, Hilton County is monitoring the number of cases. So they will let us know if we reach the, the number. And I wish I knew what the number is, that we consider it to be an outbreak. And so, we're working through, we've not been in that situation before, so as I spoke to Mrs. Strauss for this, actually, a few hours ago, um, she's waiting to hear back from them. And that would mean that those students who are not immunized would perhaps be excluded from school for whatever period of time. So if I had pertussis, and I was with you all today, you could break out with pertussis in the next 21 days, or whatever, however many of those days are. And I'm not sure of that, that number either. So just know that we're continuing to monitor it. We are following our protocol, letting parents know, and...
So let me, just another silly question. So if you have a child who wasn't immunized, and they are home for, let's say, 21 days, while they go through this, whatever period it is. So obviously, they're not gonna be at school, and then they hit their hour threshold.
Yeah.
Or is a letter gonna be generated? How's that work? I mean...
Yeah, and we would, they would still, all of the household 410 still applies, whether you have medical emergency or not. It's all still like... Here's that students are hospitalized, and we have to have that.
Then you have to have that conversation, like...
Have a meeting.
Yeah, we, we, we know Johnny's, you know, in the hospital on bypass, but if you don't send him to school, household 410 is gonna...
Yeah.
Take it a quarter.
We don't get to choose when the law applies or not.
That's fantastic.
So anyway, I, I just, I wish I could communicate with our families about, uh, you know, I wish I didn't have to communicate, but we do communicate. And I don't want folks to think that we are not assuring them and, you know, making this a safe place. So maybe it's one of these now, just three, one, two, maybe three.
Uh, is that three students, or?
Three students actually diagnosed.
Right.
But they have siblings in other places that weren't diagnosed, but yet are treated. Were not diagnosed. But, so the student that attends the Oaks, um, we do believe does take transportation for us. So we'll have to communicate with those students on the bus. And then the Oaks is taking care of all the communication with students there. But that student is related to a middle school student. And the middle school student we learned today was actually diagnosed with it. And they have a sibling that is here, but is not diagnosed with it. But is being treated. That was new learning for me. I did not know that, even though you're not ill, we're still going to treat you.
Right, they don't want it spread?
It's interesting, yeah.
Hang on, one more thing.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm old. So I'm going back in time every time I, I'll go next to them.
We appreciate your wisdom. You're just...
Many years ago, we, um, we started down a path, and the timing was terrible. And we kinda let it go. But the timing right now may be amazing, because of the middle school construction going on and, and the work. We had a benefactor that took care of our district for years, in Mr. Lecker. And we lost them in 2011. And at the time, we were actually looking at naming the middle school auditorium after him. At no cost to him, but just to say thank you for all he did for us. And having the, doing it during the school play, having a, a gathering for the family to socialize and, and mingle, and then having them come up here to play in a reserved area for them. Something to think about, 'cause we do have a spring play this year, I believe is what it's gonna be now.
We do, but it's not next week.
No, most of the construction will be hopefully done by that point. It might be a good time to showcase the middle school, and to say thank you to a family that's been very good to us. Just a thought.
Okay.
And once in a while, I pull up...
Of the Linder family, I'm not really very familiar with them. It's like, who remains?
It was, I believe his wife is still alive.
Okay.
Um, his son, his sons are very active. One of his sons is, runs the Great American Insurance Company down there, so.
Okay.
So, not that we are trying to create favor, but a nice gesture to the family, and sometimes that does go along. Not that, that's why we're doing it. We're doing it just because when I got on the board, he had just donated like $20,000 to the school for the musicals alone, and then the plays. So just for that department. And I thought, that would be a nice touch, just to say thank you. It's a little late to say thank you to him, but the family would appreciate it. 'Cause he loves it all. Just a thought. Sorry, that, bad one.
That's something to think about. So we'll not be hosting a football this Friday night, but we still have a chance at that next Sunday.
Next, next Friday.
The following Friday?
Yeah.
So we'll be waiting to hear of that opportunity to be in competition, but splendidly. I mean, the entire stands were packed. It was a beautiful day.